For October 11th, already October. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I ask that Mr. Sullivan come down and give the invocation. Please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me introduce you to Cadet Captain Jonathan Hatch. He's a senior at Midwest City High School with the Air Force JROTC program. He'll be leading us in our pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank Jonathan and his parents for attending tonight. Jonathan obviously graduates this year and he plans to enlist in the military. He's undecided which branch he wants to go into. I want to encourage you to either consider the Coast Guard or the Air Force. Either one would be fine choice. But thank you for being here today.
Mayor, do you want to come down and take your photo?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead and go into community announcements. We have several tonight. We have an employee whose daughter is suffering from leukemia. Rachel Scott is 12 years old. Her parents, Bryce and Cindy Scott. Bryce works for our grants management department. They're having a benefit breakfast for her Saturday morning from 8:00 a.m. until noon at 8705 Southeast 15th and it's $5 per person. The proceeds that are collected for this will go to help pay for her medical expenses. So if in fact you can attend to that, it'd be greatly appreciated. There's a Doing It Together concert sponsored by the Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast Committee. It'll be held Sunday, November 6th at 6:00 p.m. at our Reed Center at 5750 Will Rogers Road. They've got quite a lineup of artists and should be a good time if you care to attend. And also Tinker Air Force Base for you retirees that may be out there is sponsoring a retiree day, November 5th at the Tinker Club at 7:30 a.m. There'll be VA and DAV reps there to assist you with any needs you have with benefits. Also ID cards will be made for those of you who need ID cards. And there's other specials going on throughout the day at Tinker. So if you're a retiree from the military, you might want to go out there and check it out. That's all I have.
Councilman McClure, you got any announcements?
Got nothing today.
Okay. Well, I've got a few. Sales tax came in for October. Much like some of our sister cities, we're seeing a decline in sales tax revenue. This, the sales tax revenue for October was actually down about $164,000 compared to the same period last year, which was about a dip of about 5.78 percent for the year. That puts us at about 3.75 percent compared to the first four months of last year. And compared to our projection, it's about 3.47 percent. So we will be getting together internally and charting a strategy for how we're going to address what appears to be some revenue shortfall. Of course, we do hope that the construction and the opening of a couple new stores at Southeast 15th Street and Sooner Road will help offset some of that loss that we're experiencing. We also have a number, this is a busy time of the year for the city in terms of events. This Saturday, there'll be a cruise in for coffee. It's the last event for the year. Takes place at Santa Fe Restaurant on Southeast 29th Street. That same day in town center. And we will have the Mid-America Street Festival. That's in the Charles J. Johnson Park down in town center. And that will go from 11:00 to 6:00 with all different kinds of fun things to do. We have a trick-or-treat city on October 29th. We have a Boo Bash for 4th and 5th graders. It's a Halloween themed dance on October 21st. And then in November, we'll also have our Veterans Day Parade. And then in November, we'll start a series of holiday events as well. Also wanted to mention the academy opening on October 28th. And we believe the Hobby Lobby store is going to be opening up on October 24th. We also still have our hospital grant application process is still going on. If you're interested in pursuing a hospital grant, you can contact our office and my executive assistant will provide you the necessary forms. And I'd also like to announce that we have filled two positions, critical positions within the city. You know, we've restructured some of our departments, but our new Public Works Director is Mr. Vaughn Sullivan. He's standing up in the back there. And his assistant, who will be the Assistant Public Works Director, is standing right next to him, and that's Mr. Paul Streets. I think that's all I have.
We do have one proclamation tonight, so we'll get through that. Debbie? Please come down and bring your crew. Ladies and gentlemen, after 31 years in the police department and I supervise the K-9 unit for the police department on two different occasions, our K-9 officers and their partners do a phenomenal job for our community, not only keeping drugs off the street, but also assisting in other patrol duties. These dogs are expensive. And when we lose one, although it's a great loss for the department because it's just, it's a loss of an officer, but it also comes at a great cost to the city to replace that dog. They're anywhere from $10,000 to $25,000 depending on where we get them. This young lady right here has taken Midwest City, adopted us so to speak, and with this group of people have raised 98,000 or 9,800. Whoa, I wish it was 98,000. Oh, is it 14,000? I stand corrected, Your Honor. $14,000 to help replace a dog that we're going to have to take out of service. So I felt like it was definitely worth doing a proclamation and I'll read it to you. Whereas Midwest City resident Debbie Phillips has dedicated her life to the betterment of dogs and has rescued many dogs and animals throughout her years of charity work. Whereas the last two years, Ms. Phillips has successfully led fundraisers and has brought the community together to directly benefit the Midwest City Police K-9 officers and their K-9 officer handlers with thousands of dollars raised. And whereas she has built a team of wonderful people who have given all their time toward these fundraisers, including Dana LaHawn, Samantha LeCure, James and Tanya Householder, Karen Thesis, Antonia Jennings, I'm sorry, Kim Thompson, Roy and Wanda Higginthorn, Caitlin Norman, Anita Hannah and Grace Oliver, Julie Decent, Reagan Hare, Antonia Jenkins, Lana Jones, Bill Mason, and crime analysis Sue Steger. Woo! I'll get through this. Now therefore I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 11th, as Debbie Phillips' Day in the city of Midwest City and do hereby urge all citizens to offer her and her team much gratitude for their charity work. Thank you so much. There's no diplomatic immunity. But please, thank you. As Mayor of Midwest City, I thank you for your work. It's a huge benefit to the officers. It's a relief off our budget, obviously. And I just want to thank all of you. And this, ladies and gentlemen, is what community is all about. Coming together and working one toward one goal and one purpose. Thanks again. And this is yours to keep.
Thank you so much.
Oh, pictures. Let me turn off this microphone. We'll go move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda, these items are placed on the consent agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members or members of the audience wish to discuss them, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote, please.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yep.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries.
First discussion item is C-8-74, Discussion: Consideration of an Appeal by General Lighting and Sign Services, Section 9-386(c) of the Midwest City Sign Ordinance, which only allows one freestanding sign per frontage for the property located at 5800 Tinker Diagonal. We understand that the request has been modified and no longer requires an approval or an appeal to the city council. So we would recommend that the item be struck.
Move to strike.
Second. Have a motion to strike. All in favor, go through real call vote.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yep.
Five?
Aye.
Six?
Yes.
Item carries. Next item?
Can I just say real quick? I got a lot of compliments on Billy from a couple people at Utterburg that called me and talked through this, how he worked with them. And that's just how I love to see the city does it, they work with the business owners. Thank you very much, Billy.
Thank you, Billy. And I would like to say that from the last meeting, I'd like to indicate that I do support small businesses as well as large businesses here in Midwest City. Thank you.
Okay, next item. Thank you very much. It's well-known. Discussion: Consideration of appointing a new member to the ADA Transition Plan Committee to fill the vacancy created when April Hawkins moved out of town. We, I believe that we want to continue this item and we'll bring it back when you all provide us a name. But we'll continue it to the next meeting.
Item's been continued. We'll move into the new business public discussion. We have William Glose Locker who wants to address the council.
Keep in mind that items that are not on the agenda, the council cannot respond to Mr. Glose Locker. So the floor's yours, sir.
We should have a brass plate with that somewhere.
I know. I thought it was 1804.
Now I'm on. Okay. All of you are more than just our representatives. You are the, you set the standard for Midwest City. The way you act and what you do sets the standard for the 500 employees that work for you and the 54,000 people that live here. We continually have these items come before the city council, like the sign, where you're asked to give a variance. And it sounds like a good idea. A company comes, they want a variance, and the first thing you think about, oh sure, we need to help this company. But how can code enforcement go out and expect to do their job and for people to comply with the codes if the city council is giving variances and not following the codes themselves? How can our fire inspectors go out and expect people to comply with the fire inspector's requests? How can we expect the police department to expect people not to speed and to follow the rules of the road when the city's not doing it? Now, all of you have been doing a really good job lately. Your predecessors have not. And as our mayor said upstairs, it has caused a lot of problems for us. We had a really good sign ordinance, which has been picked apart. But it's not the only thing that we've done over the years. And then we, the next city council picks it apart and the next city council picks it apart and we end up losing what the idea was of the council. So when somebody gets on a city council and they're willing to put in eight, 12 years of their lives to make a difference and the next person comes in, like the sign ordinance, and in 30 minutes decided, okay, we're just going to grandfather all the signs. Nine years' worth of work went down the drain in 30 minutes. This is ridiculous. Now when it comes to the item that we talked about upstairs with Utterburg, there is a need for a specific set of rules dealing with the businesses that are along the interstate. We need to create a specific set of rules and regulations for those businesses, not to have them come to the city council and to have to come and ask for variance each time they do something. Obviously, the companies that are along the interstate have specific problems that someone on Air Depot doesn't have. And I understand we don't want to treat big businesses different than small ones, but a car dealership along the interstate where people are doing 65 miles an hour is a lot different than a small shop on Air Depot where somebody's doing 35 miles an hour. You're right, Mr. Mayor, when you said we need to go back and look at this. We really do. And we need to carve out a specific set of rules and regulations for those businesses along the interstate so they're not coming here asking for a variance all the time. This stuff just shouldn't be happening. We need to, we're getting ready to be 75 years old. We need to act like adults instead of a bunch of children. And the city's been run like a bunch of children here over the last couple of mayors. I mean, I love them, but you know, we need to be looking at solving problems and not creating them by giving variances all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
I was advised that we needed to have a motion to continue the last agenda item.
Move to continue the item.
Second. Okay, the last agenda item is being continued. I have a motion and I have a second. We will have real call vote, please.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yep.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is there any new, any other new business?
Is there any other new business that needs to come before the council this evening?
James Harpen, 1250 North Air Depot Boulevard. In here as my capacity as post commander for American Legion Post 170, 8608 Northeast 10th Street. It kind of skipped over. I was ready to jump up for public stuff. That's what I'm here for this evening. Just to let you know that we have some activities coming up that are open to the community over the next couple months. First one being our first, what I hope will be an annual trunk-or-treat in conjunction with the local BACA chapter on the 28th of October from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at our Legion Post home. Hopefully, whether permitting, it will be outside. Whether or not permitting, we're going to figure out how to get motorcycles inside the post. Anyhow. It was also mentioned that next month, November 11th, is Veterans Day and there will be a Veterans Day Parade. It is also our, and I'm talking with the Legion Post, annual joint commemoration service with the Canadian unit from Tinker Air Force Base. For those of you that don't know, November 11th is their Remembrance Day, which is equivalent to our Memorial Day. We have a joint ceremony out at Arlington Memorial Gardens at about 10:30 in the morning, which is open to the public. Everybody's asked to come out and support them. And that is followed by an open house at our post home with free lunch immediately following. And then in December, on December 17th, we will crank back up, for those of you that have been around here for a few years, our annual children's Christmas party for the children of Midwest City. And we are taking donations of unwrapped toys, monetary donations to buy those, to give out to those kids. We have already contracted and Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be there to help out the kids. And I'd just like to invite the community to come up and see what we're doing. Veterans, our post home is open seven days a week. Come on in, enjoy, sit down, commiserate with fellow veterans, swap war stories, tell lies. Anyhow, that's what I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your service.
Ladies and gentlemen, it looks like we can adjourn. Do we have an amendment?
No, that was approved under the consent.
I'll consider a motion to adjourn. Motion?
You can just adjourn.
Okay.
He keeps forgetting he's got the power.
You have the power!
Not used to that. Move into...
Don't cry at home.
This meeting's over. He tells us why. That's not good.
Okay, we're adjourned. By the power of the chair. Move into the Midwest City Municipal Authority Agenda. Call this meeting to order. Go into the consent agenda. Next item on the agenda.
These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the trustees of the municipal authority, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Go ahead and real call vote.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yep.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is there any new business or public discussion before the municipal authority?
Move to adjourn.
No, we don't need a motion.
Okay, we're adjourned. I can do that. We'll go ahead and move into the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority Agenda and call this meeting to order. We go into the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees of the Memorial Hospital Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, that item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
A motion?
Second.
Have a second. Go ahead and real call vote.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. We're now in the executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be moving to executive session. We'll be back shortly. Oh. I thought you were going to have the whole iPad voting thing taken care of by the... We, uh, have already contracted, uh, and Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be there to, uh, help out the kids. And I'd just like to invite the community to come up and see what we're doing. Veterans, our post home is open seven days a week. Come on in, enjoy, sit down, commiserate with fellow veterans, swap war stories, tell lies. Anyhow, that's what I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your service.
Uh, no.
Ladies and gentlemen, it looks like, uh, we can adjourn. Uh, do we have an amendment?
No, that was approved under the consent.
I'll, uh, consider a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
You don't, you can just adjourn.
Okay.
He keeps forgetting he's got the power.
You have the power!
Not used to that. Move into, uh...
Don't cry at home.
This meeting's over, he tells us why, that's, that's not good.
Okay, we're adjourned. By the power of the chair. Move into the Midwest City Municipal Authority Agenda, and call this meeting to order. Go into the consent agenda, next item on the, uh, agenda.
These items are placed on the consent agenda so that the trustees of the municipal authority by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Go ahead, real call vote.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yep.
Five.
Yes.
Six.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Is there any new, new business or public discussion, uh, before the municipal authority?
Move to adjourn.
No, we don't need a motion.
Okay, uh, we're adjourned for now. I can do that. We'll go ahead and move into the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority Agenda and call this meeting to order. We go into the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees of the Memorial, uh, Hospital Authority by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, that item will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move to approve the consent agenda. Motion?
Second.
Have a second. We will have the call, real call vote.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
C.
Five.
Yes.
Six.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. One discussion item, go ahead.
That would be discussion consideration of a, of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. No action is necessary on that. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that wants to, uh, uh, present new business or public discussion be- before the hospital authority? Not, we can move into executive session. The first executive session item is not necessary, but the second one is. Discussion and consideration of one entering into executive session is allowed under twenty-five O.S., Section three oh seven B three. To discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property in an open session, authorizing the general manager administrator to take action is appropriate based upon the discussion in executive session.
Move to go to executive session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yep.
Five.
Yes.
Six.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Uh, we're now in the executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be moving to executive session. We'll be back shortly. I, oh.
Gosh, me too.
I thought you were gonna have the whole iPad voting thing taken care of by the...
I thought you were going to have the whole iPad voting thing taken care of by now.
Okay, coming out of executive session, staff is recommending to the authority that we pursue the acquisition of approximately seven point eight acres of land in the eighty-eight hundred block of southeast twenty-ninth street for future economic development purpose purposes in an amount not to exceed for both parcels of land, a two point eight acre parcel and a five point zero acre parcel in an amount not to exceed three and a half million dollars.
Plus related costs.
Please.
Plus related costs.
Plus related expenses.
Move to approve.
Second the motion.
Have motion in a second. Go ahead and vote.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yeah.
Five?
Yes.
Six? Mayor?
Yes. Now adjourn the previous meeting, call to order the Midwest City Economic Development Commission. Have consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agenda so that the commissioners, the Economic Development Commission by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one item proposed does not meet the approval of the trustees or the members of the audience wish to discuss an item, then that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to...
First item.
Move to...
This is consent.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Sir. I've got a motion in a second. Go ahead and vote.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yeah.
Five?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. First item for discussion.
Any new business or public discussion? There being none, you may adjourn.
So adjourned. Call to order the Midwest City Municipal Utilities Authority. Do you have consent agenda? We have two items on the consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion for the...
Second.
Have motion in a second. Go ahead with the vote.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yeah.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Any new business or public discussion?